Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Could we take our seats, please? A nice turnout tonight. Welcome to our city commission meeting. Uh, city clerk, all roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo.
Here.
Commissioner Good.
I'm here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Seifel.
I'm here.
Mayor Ordus.
Here.
City Manager Dodge.
Here.
City Attorney Goran.
I'm here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We all stand for a pledge of allegiance, please. Vice Mayor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Before we get started, I have a real quick announcement. Uh, I'm, my tenure in office is almost near thirty years. Uh, and I've enjoyed every minute of it, almost every minute of it. But I'll tell you, this city has a great staff. This city has a great fire department. This city has a great police department. Recreation, you can't have a better city. And my wife Barbara gives me all the support. And Nick is here. So I'm gonna call it quits this year, and I love serving you. Thank you. Barbara, stand up. Thank you very much. All right, our first presentation is gonna be on water safety.
Good evening, Mayor Commission Christina Sorenson, Assistant City Manager. Mayor, thank you for moving this item to the front. My apologies, I had meant to ask Marlene to put it in the agenda that way. It's some really important information I wanted everybody in this room to hear. Water Safety Month is the month of May. Um, the Division Chief Danny Almiger is gonna be giving you a presentation with some statistics and information. But um, this is, we've partnered together, we feel this is really important. We're gonna be having an event this Saturday, and he will give you some of that information. But Vice Mayor, I know that this is near and dear to your heart. We have new, new things for you. So Danny's gonna go over them a little bit, but um, I just wanted to say thank you. And uh, I'll tell you some more about it when Danny finishes the presentation.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Dodge, uh, city commissioners and uh, city staff, thanks for having us here. Daniel Almiger, Division Chief and Fire Marshal here with the City of Pembroke Pines. Um, our fire department's really excited to have partnered with the Parks Department for such an important issue as drowning prevention and water safety. As you may know, and Christina mentioned, May is National Water Safety Month. And during this time, we pause to really acknowledge uh, the realities of drowning and reflect on what we can do as a community to keep our residents safe. I'd like to take less than five minutes of your time to share with you some important information. Unfortunately, drowning at this present time is the number one leading cause of death among children ages one to four. And Florida is ranked highest in the United States for unintentional drownings among children the same age, one to four. And even worse, at seventy percent. Seventy percent of these child drowning incidents occur in public and private pools. So we understand that drowning is also the leading cause of death with autism and children under the age of fourteen. And sadly, distracted caregivers are the primary factor for child drowning incidents. And the scary thing at all is that when drowning incidents occur, they occur without a sound. Because they're fighting for their lives and they can't even, they can't even cry. So let's brighten this up a little bit, let's see what we can do. We'll bring some important information. We understand that water survival skill training and swim lessons drastically reduce the risk of drowning in children's under the age of five. It's also safe to start introducing babies when, uh, to the water when they're already at six months of age. And by their fourth birthday, most children are already ready for swim lessons. Now, once we have them in the water, we do wanna pitch that swim aids such as water wings or noodles are fun toys for kids, but they should never be used in place of a PFD, a personal flotation device that's approved by the United States Coast Guard. So we, we provided some examples for you there. And always know your surroundings, including possible drowning risks at home, and especially when we're traveling, when we're nearing the summertime. As we, as we travel, make sure that you're aware of your surrounding areas. We're really strict with our codes here, but most people aren't. Whether there's lack of pool fences or areas that are not protected by gates, it's important as the adults to be aware. Ensure that you have a trusted caregiver, always supervising your children. Never leave a child alone near water, even for a second. And always, 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 assign a water watcher and use touch supervision, which means that that adult should be at a near distance to the child while they're in the water. And last, but not least, we know this, during these large groups in the summer, don't assume that someone's watching your child. Make sure you're doing it yourself or that you assign someone to do so. You know, with this in mind, you know, it's important to maintain a four-foot pool fence, self-closing, self-latching gates and doors. Secure all locks and doors, windows, and pet doors in your home that lead to your pool. Avoid every single liability possible. Don't become a statistic. Install and routinely check your door chimes and pool alarms. Just as we get used to checking our, our smoke detectors six months, make sure that those pool chimes and alarms are working as well. So what can we do and how are we gonna change this? Well, we're starting off by this Saturday, May sixth, twenty twenty-three, from ten AM to twelve PM, having an event, a Water Safety Day at Academic Village. We'll have water safety-related activities, giveaways, a live DJ to have some fun, some light food and refreshments. And the Parks Department will be distributing a limited amount of free lesson vouchers for those that are unfortunate and can't afford it. Additionally, the Fire Department will have a water safety presentation, and we'll be discussing the importance of direct supervision, water safe rescue practices, and we'll be discussing and presenting three-minute CPR to those that are there so they can join us and, and also understand that they can receive free friends and family CPR classes through our city and through our Fire Department, cuz we are here to help. Lastly, we'll be distributing these water watcher cards that you guys have received and have there on your desk, along with lanyards, whistles, and some other Fire Department promotional activities. Um, the importance of all of this is that we really promote a safe environment for our children and our family members. In the last few weeks, we have seen case after case of drowning incidents, two in the past two days. Our city is proud to stand together and truly make a difference in this matter. We look forward to hopefully seeing as many of you as possible on Saturday. And lastly, we ask that you follow us on social media, cuz we're always issuing these public messages. As a matter of fact, we have some water watcher cards here for families. So if they'd like to grab one here as well, we'd be more than happy to give it to them. But most importantly, we look forward to seeing everyone in this pair partnership. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Let me just wanna say, all of us have been very involved. The Vice Mayor Seifel has really been involved. And at every meeting we have, she brings those water safety slings too. And I was blessed, I guess, by the Lord that I don't have any buoyancy. It's not funny. So when I try to float, I float on the bottom. But we're still trying to learn, I'm young yet. I'm gonna try to learn. I thank you all, congratulations, congratulations. Okay, let's get on to the great high school, Wes Broward. Okay, this is for the Wes Broward High School Drill Team, who took first place in the two, twenty twenty-three State of Florida JROTC Drill Team Championship. And our plaque reads as follows. Whereas on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, the Wes Broward High School JROTC Drill Team took first place in the twenty twenty-three State of Florida Army JROTC Drill Championship Meet held in Lakeland, Florida. And whereas on the direction of First Sergeant David Torres, Sergeant First Class Frank Rosario, and Lieutenant Colonel Kenneth Merkel, cadets are instructed on many life skills such as leadership, citizenship, physical fitness, discipline, drill and ceremonies, first aid, financial planning, and etiquette. And whereas the Wes Broward Drill Team has a dedicated coach in the First Sergeant David Torres, who taught the cadets all aspects of precision and regulation drill. If you've never seen him, you have to do that. And unarmed, there is also a team of parents who provide logistical support at all competitions, chaperone, and raise funds that are tributes to their success. And whereas the cadets dedication, hard work, indicates and includes practices every afternoon during the school year to attain the level of performance and excellence. And whereas the Wes Broward JROTC Drill Team placed in the top two in ten out of ten events and first place overall at the North Miami Beach High School JROTC Drill Meet on December tenth, twenty twenty-two. And whereas the Wes Broward JROTC Drill Team placed in the top three in twenty-one out of twenty-two events and first place overall at the Crow Gables High School JROTC Drill Meet on January twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. And whereas, they're doing a lot. Whereas the Wes Broward JROTC Drill Team placed in the top three in sixteen out of twenty-two events and first place overall at the Monry Jackson High School JROTC Drill Meet on February eleventh, twenty twenty-three. And whereas the Wes Broward JROTC Drill Team placed in the top three in nineteen out of twenty-five events and first place at the Broward County JROTC Drill Championship Meet on March fourth, twenty twenty-three. And whereas the Wes Broward JROTC Drill Team placed in the top three in ten out of eighteen events and first place in the State of Florida Army JROTC Drill Championship Meet on April fifth, twenty twenty-three. Now therefore, I Frank Siures, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the greatest city in the world Pembroke Pines, along with our city commissioners, proud to recognize and congratulate the Wes Broward High School JROTC Drill Team for placing number one in the State of Florida in twenty twenty-three Army JROTC Drill Championship Meet. Congratulations. Congratulations, congratulations, congratulations. Great job, great job. Look at all these trophies, huh? Congratulations, congratulations, congratulations. If I missed anything, congratulations. All right, I'll shake everybody else's hand. All right. Mr. Principal, I'm gonna present this to you, and would you like to say a few words?
Sure, Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, City Manager Dodge, and all of the commissioners. Thank you, guys. I just wanna just tell the kids, I tell them every day how proud I am of them and how proud I am of First Sergeant Torres and, and all the other, uh, excuse me, all the other leaders of, of Wes Broward High School. So the, the kids do practice in the morning, they do practice in the afternoon, and they go out every single weekend and compete throughout the state. So for them to be state champions is, is honorable, and it's a special moment. So we're very proud, and we're proud of the parents, as you see. They all commit their time and effort also, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Principal. Commissioners, why don't you come down and take a picture? We gotta take a picture with you. Commissioner, is it cutting down? Yeah, you're talling.
Hey, everybody, can y'all see each other? I am, but I want to see it so. Before the chaos occurs.
All right. Here's how we do it at Pembroke Pines. One, two, three, pose. And now, one, two, three, shoot.
Not really. We good?
We good? All right. Thank you all, thank you all. Wow. Look at these trophies. Congratulations, congratulations. Okay, thank you all. One more time, one more round of applause. Principal for two wins a lot of stuff in that school. Congratulations. Our next presentation is Jewish American Heritage Month. Whereas Jewish immigrants in America, ever since their first arrival to our shores in the sixteenth century, have played a central role in the creation, growth, freedom, prosperity, and strength of the United States of America. And whereas the biblical and contemporary history of the Jewish people and the enduring values of the Jewish faith were vital sources of inspiration for the founding of the United States. The civil rights movement, America's global leadership and the cause of freedom, America's commitment to social justice, and many of our country's most central tenets. And whereas through core Jewish beliefs such as the creation of man in the image of God, the infinite value of every human life, the need for a weekly Sabbath, and the importance of education in the lives of children, the Jewish community has helped to define America's character and values. And whereas following the rebirth of Zionism and miraculous return of the Jewish people to the Jewish homeland, the United States was the first country in the world to recognize the State of Israel in nineteen forty-eight. And over the years, has developed a deep friendship and unbreakable alliance with the State of Israel based upon shared values and mutual interest. And whereas the State of Israel now celebrates the seventy-fifth anniversary of its modern founding and its emergence over the last few decades as a beacon of freedom and prosperity and a world leader in technologies, agriculture, water conservation, medicine, and all manner of innovation. And whereas for forty-two years, every president of the United States has declared a period of time for celebrating the contributions to the United States of the Jewish community's history, heritage, and culture. And since two thousand and six, the month of May has been presidentially declared to be the Jewish American Heritage Month pursuant to the bipartisan resolution of Congress. Now therefore, Frank Siures, Mayor of the City of Pembroke Pines, along with our city commission, hereby proclaim May twenty-third as Jewish Heritage, Jewish American Heritage Month in the City of Pembroke Pines, and call upon all citizens to commemorate this occasion by appropriately celebrating our Jewish community's history, heritage, and cultural contribution to our great country. Congratulations. All right, the next one, a couple more. This is our National Childcare Provider Appreciation Day. Whereas National Provider Appreciation Day, also known as National Childcare Provider Day, is celebrated on May twelfth, twenty twenty-three. And whereas childcare providers offer the opportunity for parents who live in our city to work, attend school, or participate in a job training program while their children are in nurturing environments. And whereas Florida is home to one point three million children under the age of six, I did not know that, and nearly fifty thousand plus children in Broward attend one of the eight hundred-plus early education programs each day in Broward. And whereas our thirty-seven child program, programs in the City of Pembroke Pines ranging from small and large private businesses, family childcare homes, faith-based programs, and public school settings that employ over three hundred early learning educators to support working families. And whereas the dedication of early childhood, early childcare educators enable many childcare facilities to remain open at the height of the pandemic to ensure that childcare services remain available for approximately three thousand Broward first responders' children to serve. And whereas high-quality early education experiences give young children the best start in school and live in life so families, communities, the state, and the nation can thrive. Whereas National Childcare Provider Appreciation Day allows the City of Pembroke Pines to honor its childcare educator's commitment to facilitating high-quality care and early living. Now therefore, Frank Siures, Mayor of the City of Pembroke Pines, along with our great commission, hereby proclaim May twelfth, twenty twenty-three as National Child Provider Appreciation Day in the City of Pembroke Pines. Congratulations. Somebody? Congratulations. Thank you, someone.
Thank you. Um, I just wanna thank the City of Pembroke Pines for this wonderful proclamation on behalf of childcare providers. I'm from the Early Learning Coalition of Broward County. The childcare providers, as you know, work long days, and so they couldn't be here tonight. So on their behalf, we're here to thank, thank them. Um, as you know, it takes a village to raise children and childcare. The whole childcare system is key, is a key component to that village. Um, and they, this is how children are prepared for kindergarten. They learn to share their crayons. It allows parents to work, it does so much for our community. This is a workforce of about five hundred in, in Pembroke Pines, and they are very important for all of us. So I just wanna say thank you to them, thank you to the City of Pembroke Pines.
Thank you, congratulations. All right, Vice Mayor, one more. Okay, this is a proclamation on Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas National Alliance Mental Health, NAMI, Broward's mission is to bring awareness and programs to Broward County in support of a world-class treatment and recovery system for people with mental illness. Naomi Broward provides support, education, and advocacy to foster better understanding, coping strategies, and positive outcomes for people and their families affected by mental illness. And whereas Good Healthcare provides mental health care, which must be accessible to all people, regardless of race, gender, age, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, values, and cultural beliefs, it is essential that these factors be considered as part of treatment so that shared community can be a source of strength. And whereas the depth of the mental health crisis among children and adults is staggering. One in five adults will experience mental health in any given year. Half of all mental health illnesses begin at age fourteen, and seventy-five percent begin by age twenty-five, twenty-four years old, I never knew that. Earlier treatment means better outcomes. And whereas half the children and adults living with mental illness never receive life-changing treatment due to the lack of access, access to care and stigma. The reliance and recovery of the people living with a mental diagnosis should be celebrated rather than stigma-like. And whereas mental illness is not a crime. However, inmates with a mental health diagnosis are overrepresented in jails and prisons. Naomi applauds crime intervention training for law enforcement officers, diversion programs, and mobile crisis response team that effectively decrease justice system involvement and increase safety. And whereas people with mental illnesses are able to live meaningful, meaningful lives and make important and valuable contributions. Communities support those with mental illness by ensuring accessibility to quality care and appropriate supports. And whereas Naomi, Broward County observes the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month to raise awareness of mental health, to encourage those living with mental health to seek help and to be uplifted by our message, you're not alone. Now, therefore, I Frank Siures, Mayor, City of Pembroke Pines, and our commission, hereby proclaim Mental Health Awareness Month in the City of Pembroke Pines, May twenty, twenty-three. Congratulations. Is there somebody here? Hey. Congratulations.
NAMI.
He's taller.
Hey, y'all, how y'all doing?
Good.
Have you heard of NAMI before? Yes, no? Oh, so it seems like a lot of you have. Um, I just wanted to briefly talk about the support systems that we have and the programs that we can offer. Um, one of them is ending the silence, so we go to elementary schools, high schools, um, and even universities, and we talk about mental illness, we talk about the symptoms, the signs, and we typically have a story of someone who speaks about their, their story. Uh, we have support groups, we have family-to-family. So if you're a family member who has another family member that's living with some type of like mental illness, we have programs for that. We have NAMI Connections, which if you live with a mental illness yourself, um, you can go and you can have conversations with other people who live with mental illness. Um, just real brief, uh, talk about NAMI, just keep it really, really quick. Um, NAMI's been very important and influential in my life. Uh, it's the largest organization that focuses on mental illness, and I was diagnosed with bipolar disorder the summer after my freshman year at Georgetown. I had a psychotic episode. And um, it was definitely a, a difficult process to, to live with, um, believing things like you're a god or you could fly. Um, but NAMI has been very influential in helping me be able to tell my story. Right now, I'm getting my doctorate in public health. So just being able to really talk about my experiences and helping others has been very helpful. So we wanna offer our thanks, and if you need help or if you need any type of programming, we're more than willing to help out.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. McAfee. It's always, NAMI has always been a big supporter of our raising positive children, and they are at every one of our events, and we wanna thank you for being there and, and being able to talk to parents, talk to families, give them, uh, like what you just said here today, you know, a contact, someone to speak to, to see that they're not alone out there and that this is not an illness, it is an affliction, I guess, if you, if that's what you wanna call it. It's something we have to get over, and uh, NAMI has always been there. So I wanna thank you publicly for, for being there and supporting, and we'll have you at the next one as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could.
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo. Thank you very much. Two points. First, a sad day today, I learned today on social media that our good friend Ben Minaj passed away, and I'm so very sorry to hear it. Uh, Ben was, uh, uh, someone who loved Pembroke Pines very, very much. He, he was a great artist, but even more than that, he, he inspired others to create art, and he never gave up on the ability of anyone to enjoy art. And he and I had many, many conversations as he got ready to do his amazing marble base for the nine-one-one memorial, uh, which every time I see it, it, it just, it, it, it hits me very, very emotionally. It's just so beautifully done. And that piece alone, uh, will make sure that his life is forever remembered in this city. He was a tremendous human being, and we send our, uh, our best wishes to Norma and to his entire family. And if we could have a moment of silence, and then I have another request. Okay, moment of silence, please. All right, thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor. And, and the request is, we have numerous people here from the Estancia community and also from the Yancantara community, and also from people in, in Wes Broward, Wes, well, Wes Pines, who have an interest in item twelve. And Mayor, I was wondering if, if, if it would be okay if we took item twelve out of order, out of respect to their, their time? Sure.
Mayor, before we do that, I have one quick little announcement, if I can make that.
Sure.
Um, I recently, uh, these are being passed out. Um, you know, May is the month of Mother's Day, right? And so what, what better gift can we, as mothers, do but to keep ourselves healthy for, for our families, for our children, for our grandchildren? So I have asked the, uh, I gave a copy to the city clerk, and so, um, city manager, I'm hoping that this, and it's a message about mammograms, ladies, and how important that that is. Early detection is the key, absolutely the key. And you know, we just all worked very hard, Mayor, for our Relay for Life, which was very, very successful, um, in, in our city here and in surrounding cities. So, um, I'm going to ask if we can't, um, uh, city manager, have this placed somewhere on our city's website, and maybe Ms. Sorenson out through some of our Parks and Rec, we can get messages out to our parents, our moms out there to do this. It's, and I'm not advocating for any particular hospital or medical or anything, I'm just saying, go get it done. Go get it done. Make that be your Mother's Day gift to yourself or to your mother or to your grandmother. Go and do it. Go and do it, make it for your children. So thank you.
And a group of women are meeting at a restaurant. We set a meeting for Tuesday.
You're going to give them mammograms there?
No.
Oh. They're coming to talk about it. Okay.
I'd say attorney, item 12, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Commission, if you will, item number 12, out of sequence, is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number 2023-R-12, which is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving and authorizing the purchase of approximately 3.923 acres of real property from VD Homestead LLC, generally located south of Pines Boulevard and west to southwest 196th Avenue, subject to the terms and conditions as set forth in the purchase and sale agreement attached here to Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to take any and all action necessary to effectuate the intent of the resolution and to effectuate the acquisition of such real property in accordance with the terms of the purchase and sale agreement, and any amendments thereto, providing for conference, providing for certifiability, and finally, providing for effective date.
So moved.
Number 12, thank you.
Motion by Commissioner Castillo, second by the Vice Mayor. Discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo.
Thank you very much. I am very, very thankful to the City Commission for unanimously agreeing to direct city staff to explore the potential purchase of this parcel for green space use. And the specific use of it, we can evolve over time. But what we don't want there is more townhomes. It is a, it is a, a location that is within sight of a beautiful wetland that exists currently for both the Encantada and Estancia communities. But across the street, we also have the ranch areas. And they too, the quality of their life and the character of their community needs to be preserved. This parcel, Charlie will recall, was part of, was contemplated as part of the 2005 bond issue. We weren't able to buy it because the church that owned it at the time wasn't willing to sell. But we talked about how we should be looking to buy this property for a long time. And here we are, 17 years later. Hopefully, we're going to make it happen tonight. So I want to thank you very, very much. I also want to note that in the addendum that was left on our dais, I wasn't aware of this before the meeting, but the purchase price went down. And that's a good thing. And, but certainly, certainly, it's very well appreciated in West Pines. We've seen many, many emails about encouraging us to do this. I don't know one person in West Pines that doesn't think this is a good idea, and I'm very, very glad to move it, and I want to thank Commissioner Cyple for seconding it. And that's it right now. I don't know if anyone from the public wishes to speak.
Hold on, hold on. Any discussion for the Commissioner?
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. This is, I have to tell you, this is one of the best items that we have had on this dais in a long time. We've had a lot of really good things that have happened here. But this is one that is so far-reaching in the quality of what it says about the City of Pembroke Pines and how sometimes folks seem to think that we don't really listen or we don't really act upon quick enough, and that may be true in some cases. But here, I cannot see any reason, any reason that someone would not say, oh, yeah, 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 let's go forward with this. The drop in the price is certainly always, that's always, you know, a good thing. But that wasn't the most important thing. Surely, it was not the most important thing. We have, we don't often have the opportunity to be able to purchase land for the purpose that we're talking about possibly doing here, which is park or open or recreational, something like that. We don't often have that opportunity to do it. So the fact that we are, that it's here, we're talking about it, and I certainly am hoping that we have unanimous vote to go forward with this tonight to give direction to City Attorney, City Manager, to work this out and that we will forever be able to go down 196th and be able to see trees, birds, greenery. No more concrete, no more concrete. We don't need any more concrete. We need trees and greenery. So I'm very, very happy to second this motion and wholeheartedly support it. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Mayor. So just a couple administrative issues. Mr. Dodge, one of the things that, you know, we pride ourselves is to have full disclosure and transparency of all items that come in front of the commission. If you ask the general public how much the original item before the 4:11 PM today addendum was emailed to us, there's no purchase price in the title unless you dig deep. And generally speaking, I think that's just bad form. You take a project and a direction that we've given, and people want to know how much, how many tax dollars are going to go towards the acquisition of a land purchase. In the backup, we do have two appraisals. In the backup, we have a purchase price that was more than the appraisal. So, Mr. Dodge, do we have the addendum now in the backup online?
Mr. Dodge?
I believe it is posted, I believe it's posted online, and the price that's designated is 3.9 million.
Mr. Stam, you want to clarify, does he agree with that?
Mike Stam, City Manager, planning economic development. The agenda item online was posted and updated as we got the executed Exhibit A from the vendor. We did receive, and if you read the original agenda item, we stated that we were going to update the agenda item as we got the appraisals. The appraisals came in, we were able to renegotiate the price to a lower price, and the item has been updated online.
So, City Attorney, is there anything preventing us from putting the, substituting the addendum as the title for, that's posted online with the purchase price?
May I respond, Mr. Mayor?
Please, City Attorney.
The short answer to Commissioner Schwartz's answer is no. The title to the resolution and the backup that were supplemented supplements an existing agenda item, which meets the requirements of state law, and it also meets the requirements of the county charter regarding 48 hours to have the item on the agenda. This is a supplement to or a complement to the agenda and does provide for the appropriate notice to the public as required by the statute.
Okay, so would it be better form then? And that's, I know you're going to tell me it's a policy decision. If there's a consensus to move forward with the item, I would like to see the 3.9 million advertised, not advertised, shown on as the main item, meaning that we approve this on the 17th in lieu of what we're handcuffed right now of having something that says 4.1, and then go research it. Because I know what's going to happen.
All right, hold on a second. City Attorney, can we do that later?
Mayor, if I can, just to reiterate what I said earlier with regard to the legality of the resolution and the legality of the supplement to the agenda, all items before the commission are properly before you. Had it not been posted appropriately, had it not been available on the website, there would have been a potential question under the statute governing public notice. This particular document and the supplement to the record which occurred, in my view, does in fact comport with both state law in connection with Chapter 286, which is a statute governing sunshine and public access to the meeting and the data that's involved, as well as the issue of the supplement, which I think also meets the county code requirements.
So, and I agree with you, City Attorney. My question is, is can we show online 3.9 million dollars as a part of title? That's all I'm asking. I understand that we've met the statutory requirement, the legal threshold.
If the motion to approve the item this evening includes a modification to the title that would post that information, that could be legally done. If the motion embraced that suggested change, it would not change the result, it would not change the conclusion, but it would be additional modification to the title.
And I'll offer that as a friendly amendment, Mayor.
Is there a second? Second?
Sure, I second it. It's Minister.
Was that a motion by Commissioner Good?
It was, and I just have one quick item, Mayor. I did ask the City Attorney.
No, no, hold on. Now, you made an amendment, we're going to get a second. You got to proceed with your.
We do that first and then come back.
Okay. A discussion on the amendment. Here in a call roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cyple?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Commissioner Schwartz, what else?
Yes, quickly. I did, I asked our City Attorney if I described a scenario of a potential voting conflict. The City Attorney had advised me that I don't have a conflict, but I want to at least put on the record that I did inquire to the City Attorney of a potential voting conflict that does not exist regarding this item.
All right, very good. Commissioner Good?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a, just a quick question or two.
Go ahead.
So there is a reference here that the purchase includes off-site mitigation credits. Can somebody please explain that?
City Attorney?
Mr. Stam will be able to give you a better description of the mitigation area.
Mike Stam is the City Manager. The developer of this property had been proceeding with a townhouse application. The application was tabled, but as part of that application, he had to go through the process of off-site mitigation. So he's already purchased the off-site mitigation, and that is part of this acquisition. It's plus or minus 1.5 credits in Hole in the Donut, which is a mitigation bank. And it's also, it's identified in the purchase and sale agreement.
So does that mean then that we have the ability to resell that, should this property not be developed?
I would have to research that. I think they're tied to this. I would have to do a little bit more research on that. I can't answer at this time.
All right, that's actually a very important point here because if you're talking about a 1.5 million dollar off-site credit for a piece of.
Not 1.5 million.
How much was it then?
1.5 credits.
1.5, all right, so what would that equate to?
If I may, Commissioner, if we decide, again, at this moment in time, the commission action was open space, park, conservation area. Should the commission decide maybe to develop this as a park? We may need those credits because we may need it. There's also onsite retention and credits that need to be applied. We can further research the ability to transfer those credits, but there is about 1.5 credits at the Hole in the Donut that come along with this property. We can do that additional research, and that will also be part of our due diligence, which is a condition of the purchase and sale agreement.
All right, I just think it's very important to point that out that that's an added value to the purchase of this property because, listen, we can create a park there and we can create our own mitigation, and we would not need the mitigation credit because the intent of the mitigation credit was to develop the entire piece of property. So a park, a park does not develop the entire property, it creates space. So I think that's a very, very important point to bring out. I certainly, I do support my colleagues because I can see my colleagues are very tuned in to their communities, and I can sense that they are very, very strongly in support of this, and I wish to add my support as well because I do look forward to being able to mitigate some of these development impacts that are, you know, a little bit east of 75 in the historic section of the city. So I am 100% behind this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak? Audience, one up?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just to clarify, the motion to approve has been offered on the vote.
Oh, I need to go back and.
Yes, correct.
I need a vote on the motion as amended.
Thank you.
So call a roll, please.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
I'm sorry, a point of clarification.
We had an amendment, we voted on it. I didn't go back to the original motion. Bring that in as the original motion. That's what I'm doing now.
We're voting on the original motion?
As amended.
As amended, but is there not a public opportunity before we make a final vote on this?
There is.
All right, so, vote yes?
If you will, Mayor, Commissioner, what will happen is with the, if the commission adopts this item as amended, the title to the resolution will change and will clarify the exact purchase price in the title and will be posted appropriately.
Okay, call a roll again?
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cyple?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And the permanent number for the record is number 3820, 3820.
Now, hey, thank you. All right, who would like, would you like to speak on the item? Okay, identify yourself, please. You have three minutes.
That's pretty artwork.
Okay. All right, you got three minutes, young man. Speak, there you go.
There we go, okay. Scott Barnett, 19346 Southwest Fifth Street. Congratulations, Mayor, in 30 years, and we know you've always been a Green Mayor, so we appreciate everything that you've done. Thank you very much. As a member of the Pines Budget Advisory Committee, I've had the opportunity over the past few years to better understand the management and budgeting practices of this city. We have received a holistic view from every corner of the city's management. In fact, I encourage the rest of the commission and the mayor to reconsider supporting this committee by appointing your own district representatives to share in the dialogue on this committee about these important budget matters. We all deserve fair representation from all parts of the city, and you owe it to your residents. Pembroke Pines is a great city, it's well-managed, and we thank all of you for keeping our mileage rate at the same level even as we face the current economic situation. In light of the fact that home values have risen exponentially, and therein the city covers as well, there is a time and place when a city has an opportunity to reinvest in its citizens. That time is now. In the business world, we call this a stock buyback. I've seen the balance sheets, I've seen the investment accounts. The funds needed for this purchase are indeed available. We have all witnessed the proactive measures of the city have taken with the Howard Foreman complex, also the denial of the proposal for a women's prison and the foresight to prevent the old post office from becoming a bus depot, along with the support for the various wildlife preserves throughout the area. Thank you for all of these actions. This agenda item presents a unique opportunity for the city to step up to the plate again and save what little remains of our passive green areas. The plan to buy this land for the city was on the original bond issue in 2005, and it's time for the city to fulfill the promise it laid out so many years ago. I was here for the original P&amp;Z meeting in 2019 to challenge any zoning change, as well as the subsequent commission meetings resulting in an intelligent and thoughtful process as to the use of this land. I, along with my fellow residents that reside within 500 feet of this land, have placed our thoughts about this matter on the record in 2021, and we still remain steadfast in our support of this recent development. The city clerk has copies of these testimonies, along with a letter of support from the head of the Estancia HOA, the POA. I have had cordial conversations with the developer, and he and I discussed the importance of keeping this land as a passive area, and especially considering it is surrounded by protected wetlands on both sides. This is a bold decision, this is the right decision, and we know that the commission has the best interests in mind when it comes to the people who you represent. Please do not let us down. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Did you want to speak? Come forward, don't be shy. Okay. You have three minutes, my dear, after you identify yourself.
Okay, and these gentlemen also have signed up, so they.
They're each going to have three minutes?
Well, they probably won't take three minutes, but they did sign up.
Are they going to share with you or not?
Well, how about giving us four minutes then?
All right, go ahead.
All right. Hello, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Dodge, Commissioners, I'm Sue Snyder. I'm at 730 Southwest 191st Avenue in Pembroke Pines. Guys, I'm going to talk first, okay? First, thank you for working with the community on this 196th Avenue parcel. As many of you know, it has already been deforested and is a dirt pit. It's a scar. Have you seen it?
Yes.
If you haven't, there's pictures. Okay. Huh? Yeah. Yes, please find a way. So you've found a way to purchase the land. Next, you have earned some trust. But we are asking that you commit to keeping this land green, which you are, passive natural. And next, we commit to working with you. As a citizens committee or advisory group, please include us in your decision-making as we go forward with enough time to research, consider options, and make recommendations. Please, let's take time to plan for this area. It's a topic for another day, but let's take time to plan, okay? Finally, as I thought about this moment and why it's important, it is a symbol of Pembroke Pines's commitment to the health of our community, the importance of trees and green space for a continuing planet, our community's character, and our children's future. We will not be here forever, but the land lives on. And this is especially important for our children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren, that they have places where nature thrives. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Please let me introduce Daniel and Luca Davila, our neighbors and representatives of the future of Pembroke Pines, for their thoughts.
Good.
Whichever one wants to go first. Here you go.
Hi, my name is Luca. I live in Encantada, and I'm eight years old. My school is Pines Charter West, and I'm in second grade. We moved to Pembroke Pines because we want greenlands. But with people constantly cutting down trees, soon there won't be any more greenlands for our. soon there won't be any more greenlands for our croc, for our alligators, foxes, and so on. I think this is a great idea for the community because now at least we'll have a new greenland. I learned in school that cutting down trees would destroy animals' homes and thank you for listening to this.
Thank you, young man.
Hi, I'm Daniel Davila and I'm going to tell you why you guys should, should buy this plot of land and not build on it. Pembroke Pines is already overpopulated and if we overpopulate, we will use more land, which means cutting down more trees. And if we don't have trees, we can't remove carbon dioxide from the air and release oxygen into the air. That leads to global warming and scientists say that, that if global warming continues, our temperatures will, will higher to, will rise up to five degrees. And also if peop, if we have more people, well, that can lead to demand for supplies, as including water and food. We also take away animals' homes when we build on lands like this. That's why you see alligator, snakes, and all that stuff on the road because you took away their home. That is their home now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Good job.
May, Mayor?
Let me, let me just say one thing that I've asked our, our, our development director to give me his specifics, but I'm going to bring out something that will shock all of you, that we have the most vacant land of every city and we have it in a way that's fashionable. We have wetland, just what you talked about, that nobody could touch so that that wildlife can flourish. So I'm going to bring that all out in specifics so everybody can see where that land is out west, all the soccer parks, all the baseball parks, that's all green. Where the eagles are, it's all green. So I'm going to bring that out so everybody can see that. Vice Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Snyder, you mentioned something about going forward with this property. It's just a dirt pile right now. But to go forward with it with what may, this open space, this park, this, whatever the future of that, of that is. I know Ms. Sorenson is here tonight and we are, we are still in the process of our master parks and recreation plan where we are, where her and, and her staff and, and an engineer have been going through the entire city with all of our parks, our big parks, our little parks and all that. Perhaps maybe you should have some conversation with Ms. Sorenson about, you know, understanding more where we are right now with this parks and recreation master plan and then how, since this is now a new piece, it's kind of added to our inventory, if you will, maybe have some suggestions and, and learn a little bit more about what might be able to happen. Maybe some, some of your neighbors might be interested in, in doing that and, and I, I'm sorry that I'm offering you up, Ms. Sorenson, but I think it was an appropriate place for, for, for that context. So that would be good, I think.
There's been a lot of conversation with a lot, a lot of ideas, from restoring it to wetlands to all kinds of other things, so-
This would be the opportunity, I think, for you to, for you and your group to, to be heard on some suggestions.
Thank you.
Okay.
There she is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to speak on this item? Okay. You. Yeah, come on up. Yeah, just sometimes I hear something that we're, we're, you know, building over all of Pembroke Pines and it's just not true. So I want to make sure I can get everybody the facts.
Mayor, at the appropriate time, I'd like to have you give me a-
Hold on a second, go ahead.
After the-
You have three minutes. Name and address, please.
Yes, absolutely. Good evening and thank you for letting me come up in front of you. My name is Laura Franzek.
Will that happen a little bit? There you go, better.
Forget the children were here. Laura Franzek, I'm a resident of Encantada and also one of the founding members of Friends of the Pines. And what I wanted to say with this group, I'll keep it short and sweet in respect for your agenda. I know you've got a lot to cover this evening. But what I did want to mention is when myself, Scott, Sue, Alan, and a number of us started to get together to form this group, we began some outreach with our neighbors, with the residents, with our friends. We also engaged our HOA presidents and a lot of people in the surrounding community because people were frustrated and they wanted an opportunity to have their voices heard. They've often gotten discouraged, but with this vote tonight, I think you've gone a long way and made a tremendous approach to restoring that trust and letting people in the community know that their voices are important and it is important that they are heard and represented. So I wanted to thank you very much for that. Your support of our city is key to our residents, our neighbors. They're here because they love this city. They value what it offers to themselves and their families. And again, having their voices heard and represented is much appreciated. So I just wanted to thank you all for that.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. All right, our next, uh-
Mayor, if I may?
I'm what are you? This, we voted on this thing.
I understand. I, I just want to trust the young people, if I may.
Go ahead.
To the young folk out there, thank you for coming forward and showing real, real civil action.
Yep.
Civic action about caring about your community. If we had more kids in our commission meeting, the adults want to act like children. Now, that being said, that being said, one of the things weather-wise that you need to pay attention to, and that's thunderstorms. When hot air rises at a fast rate, it has to rapidly cool. In Pembroke Pines, if you take a look at the weather map, over the last 10 years or so, we've recorded some of the highest high temperatures in the entire South Florida. And this is the reason why Mr. Stam and his staff has been vigilant on protecting our tree canopy. So when the public on a Saturday or Sunday afternoon thinks they can just take a chainsaw to a tree, it has an impact on all of us. So by protecting this area, and I agree it's dirt, I see it every day from 1,200 feet and above, we do have an opportunity to do some really nice things. So when you saw what happened in 26 inches of rain in Fort Lauderdale, that wasn't an accident. It's because we have too much concrete and too much asphalt and too much roofing material that's causing rapid intensification. Years ago, I, I've been a home inspector for nearly 20 years. I did an inspection for the director of the Hurricane Center, who's now retired. But 15 years ago, he talked about temperature change in the, along the Gulf Stream. All it takes is a half a degree and we get clobbered. So keep it up. Keep it up. You're doing a great job.
All right, thank you. City Clerk, item eight from the agenda?
Yes, Mayor. Two items pulled from the agenda.
Okay.
Item eight was pulled from the agenda by administration and item 10 pulled from the agenda by applicant.
All right, let's go with the request of the public? Any items?
There is an item at the request of the public, Julian Estrada.
Mayor, I'm sorry.
What are you sorry about?
I was about to tell you that I believe item 10, um-
It's split.
Yeah, is being, is being pulled until June 21st. Is that correct, Mr. Stam?
Correct.
And, and your point?
It says June 7th in, in my book.
City, city, city attorney?
That's because there was an addendum, Commissioner.
Okay.
It was the 7th and then-
Now it's the 21st.
Now it is the 21st.
Thank you. We're clear. Okay. Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
There's a button there.
Right, it says speak. Right underneath the mic.
On the back.
There you go. You got it. You got it.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Julian Estrada. I go to Harab Christian School and I live at 2321 Northwest 185 Avenue. Um, I'm a senior and I'm taking speech and debate and my teacher is Mayor Sid of Miami Lakes and for one of our assignments, he wanted us to come to a city council meeting. Now, although I go to school in Hialeah, I live here in Pines, so I thought I would come here and I just wanted to commend you guys for everything you guys do and hope that one day I can rise to one of your positions. Um, I graduate this month and I'm going to be attending the University of Miami to study political science. And I hope I could one day be in your guys' feet.
You are on your way. We would love to have somebody on the days like you.
You get an A for your assignment.
Thank you, thank you. Good luck to you.
So do we have to check off that we give you an A for this?
Felicidad.
Commissioner Audit Report.
Just showing up and-
City Clerk.
Recording myself. Thank you, guys.
City Clerk, Commissioner Audit Report?
Mayor, no reports from the commission auditor.
Appeals of the Board of Adjustments?
None, Mayor.
Announcements of board and committee appointments?
No announcements.
Okay, so that means we have 1, 2, 11 as consent. What's your pleasure? So moved. Moved by Mr. Castillo, second by Vice Mayor. Discussion? Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Quasi judicial, city attorney?
There are none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Ordus's resolutions?
The rest has been read on item number 12, Mayor.
Second reading?
There are none for the record this evening, Mayor.
First reading?
Not, not any of those either.
All right, item 12, we covered. We are now on our regular agenda. Report of the league. Vice Mayor, do you want to say anything about the-
There's a league luncheon tomorrow with a pretty heavy agenda, actually, a lot of topics and some discussion, some of the normal things that we talk about all the time, but some discussion about Tallahassee happening, so should be an interesting one tomorrow.
What's for lunch? Chicken?
What's that? Who is that?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
Wouldn't mean.
What was it, Commissioner? Did you want to talk to everybody about this? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just, I just like to ask real quick, Mayor-
You, yes, sir, Commissioner. Go, go ahead.
Where, where is the meeting at tomorrow?
It's at Park, Parkland.
Parkland.
In Parkland?
Yes.
You got it, you got it. You should have gotten an email on it.
Did you get it from Sally Gold?
No.
I'll forward it to you.
I'm going to crash the party, maybe.
Go ahead.
Yeah, no, it's good.
You don't crash the party. You remember this, Commissioner.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We encourage you to come. All right, commission items. Vice Mayor Seifel. What, who is that?
You missed the report of the city manager.
No, I didn't miss it at all. Reports of the city manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as you know, I, I sent an email out earlier this week about our budget visioning workshop and that date is fine with everyone. However, not everyone can make it at 3 o'clock and we wondered if it could be changed to 5.
What was, what was the date again on that? Let me just-
It was the 4th Wednesday of the month. It was, um-
24th.
The 24th of April.
May.
Of May.
May, yeah, right.
Five, that, that works out for me.
The 24th of May was supposed to be at 3 and what are you asking for?
Uh, if everyone would be available at 5:00 PM.
You need a couple hours?
At least.
Yeah, I can do 5.
Yeah. Yep, I can do 5. Can you have them change it in our schedule?
Okay, so if there's a consensus, we'll have that meeting at 5 o'clock.
Be 101 or in here?
We'll be going in 101.
All right. Anything else?
That's it, Mayor.
City Attorney?
I do, Mayor, very quickly, if you will, we submitted to you for your review as the mayor and commission several legal memoranda with regard to two very important bills that were adopted by the legislature, one of which is the Constitutional Carry Bill, which is Senate Bill 543 and also Senate Bill 102, which is the Affordable Housing Bill, the, the bill which we have discussed at one recent meeting. Those are in the backup, not in this agenda back, backup, but are available for your review. Just so, for the record, the city administration and the city's professionals are reviewing both in a very careful, considerate way. Both are very divergent and different bills, but they have different applications. The Affordable Housing Bill is probably 100 pages long and we try to boil it down to certain conditions and issues that will help you to understand best what it means. We are studying it with Mr. Dodge as well as Mr. Stam and his professional staff. The Constitutional Carry Bill has other complications and other matters that relate to it, which we're also studying in the context of its operational issues and we're studying that with the administration and with the police department. There's one other bill that is up for final consideration, which we believe will be, will pass. I think it actually passed today, which is Senate Bill 774. That's the Form 6 versus the Form 1 bill. And if that bill is passed, which we believe it will, before the close of the session, it will become effective on January of 2024 and we'll be briefing with you on the terms, conditions, and provisions of how it works and how it changes things for you as elected officials. It would apply to mayors, city commissioners, CRA board membership, and to the Ethics, Ethics Commission, as a matter of fact, which is interesting because they, they were filing, they were Form 1 filers like, like we are now.
We'd have to file Form 6?
The commission would have to file a Form 6 beginning January of-
Yeah, I was asking if we'd have to start filing Form 6.
January of 24 is the effective date.
I think it's a great idea.
To that extent, the governor will no doubt want to sign that. Those are, the, the first two are, are in, have been adopted by the, by the governor. The third is about to be, so.
City Attorney, is, is that bill included?
Commissioner Schwartz, did you want to speak?
I'd love to.
Good. Just be recognized.
That's good. So Form 6, not an issue for me personally. But I've always had a, an issue with people who run for office who can do all these nasty things before they get elected and get all the money from places that they shouldn't get to. And then once they become elected, they don't have, then, then they have to disclose. So has Tallahassee looked at any candidate filing that would require a Form 6 or does the city commission have any authority with respect to an ordinance for candidates who file requiring additional information as part of the packet?
City Attorney?
If I may respond briefly, the Senate Bill 774 changes a state statute with regard to disclosure, financial disclosure. It, it also harmonizes with the Florida Constitution regarding full and complete disclosure, not just on just public records and sunshine, but also on disclosure of financial interest. The issue of candidacy and matters of that type are really in the state election code. I, I would, I would be best suited to defer an answer to your second question or your other question with regard to implications of, of candidacy in that matter because those are not directly connected legally. But the state election code, I, I know that there are some changes that are in the hopper before Friday, to the extent that I can, we can. Jake and I provide you with an update. We will do that certainly. But to the extent of, of any changes that would have some impact on the points you raise, we would not know until the session ends if there's something there.
There, there are cities that have ordinances that, from a, from a campaign finance perspective. I know there's been dialogue for years about public finance, you know, reform as a general-
Yes.
General rule, so are cities prohibited from, from enacting such, such requirements as if, say, if it's required as an elected, it should be required as a candidate?
Again, Mayor, if I may respond briefly?
Go ahead.
There are some fairly stringent laws that relate to candidacy under Chapter 106, which relates to campaign financing, which do have significant and serious penalties for non-compliance, but I, I can't respond, not that I don't choose to respond, but I can't respond because of the, the nature of the inquiry is rather challenging as you raise it. And, and as much as I may, I or Jake may have some innate knowledge of the subject matter, without the benefit of facts, this commission may have some regulatory power, but I will say this on the record and I'll say that because I, we as your city attorneys are advocates for you on a daily basis and the city administration. The state of Florida is in a very preemptive mood these last couple of years, given the fact that, that even the Affordable Housing Bill is a significant preemption to local decision-making, including yours and the city administrations, as well as the Constitutional Carry Bill. But the, the end result is, is that I would like to be very comfortable legally that you're not otherwise being, um, being preemptive or a state statute might otherwise prevail.
Well, at least we don't have monorail, so we don't have to worry about that preemption.
All right, city attorney, anything else?
If I may, uh, under the, under the state election code, last, if I may, Mr. Mayor, it's in Section 100.3605, which says, "The following Florida Election Code, Chapters 97 through 106," which is a good portion of the state election code, it's all of it, "shall govern the conduct of a municipality's election in the absence of an applicable special act, charter, or ordinance provision. No charter or ordinance provision shall be adopted which conflicts with or exempts a municipality from any provisions in the Florida Election Code that expressly applies to municipalities." This has been in, in the books since 1995 and that's the troublesome part because the state began picking up the ball and running with that ball away from cities unfortunately back in the mid 90s. I would look again. We'll be happy to look at the issuing response as best we can, but I can't answer it tonight.
Okay.
But thank you, Commissioner.
All right, Commissioner, Vice Mayor, item 13, please.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Thank you. Motion to direct the city manager and the city attorney to continue discussions with Broward County regarding the 1983 Traffic Engineering Agreement, the TEA, as amended and to draft a potential amendment to the TEA that will provide for changes, amendments to the various issues contained in City Attorney Memorandum Number 22023-038 dated April 25, 2023, included as backup. So, Mayor, um, I have, I, I want to read something. Okay, so this agenda item- Okay, so this agenda item brings up a very important issue for us, traffic and health and safety of our residents. For several years, I have discussed with former County Mayor Sharif and also with current County Vice Mayor Rich, Nan Rich, the issues that our residents are facing regarding traffic safety and, more specifically, this outdated traffic engineering agreement. The city entered into a traffic engineering agreement, T. E. A., with Broward County in nineteen eighty-three. This agreement was amended in nineteen eighty-four. That's almost forty years ago. A lot has changed in our communities since then. This agreement transferred certain traffic engineering functions, authority, powers, responsibilities, and duties to the county, excepting the criteria used at that time. Much has changed since then. More cars on the road, faster speed limits, more traffic volume means that road maintenance is required more often, and that includes not only road resurfacing and milling, but also the accompanying street markings and signs. The agreement states, "The county shall be fully responsible for all repair and maintenance concerning the items delineated in paragraphs A through O, but it is understood and agreed that the city shall have the duty and obligation to notify county promptly when city receives notice or has either actual or constructive knowledge of any and all defects, malfunctions, failings, and imperfections in the installation or operation of traffic regulation equipment, signs, and signals, as encompassed under this agreement, or if any said equipment, signs, and signals are in need of repair, replacement, or maintenance." This agreement also states that the county and the T. E. A. division of the county agree to accede to and to implement all reasonable written requests of the city submitted by City Manager or by resolution of City Commission for the installation, retention, or removal of traffic control devices within the city. The problem is that when we submit these requests, nothing gets done. Absolutely nothing gets done. Nothing seems to meet the criteria. They say there are certain areas, there's not enough volume on a community street for the county to repaint or stripe, but yet, there is traffic on that street, and there are kids playing on that street, and there are residents walking their dogs all along that street. Requests for overhead traffic signals, which we've had that just recently with one of my colleagues, must meet the old-school criteria, or it just gets denied when it is very clear that an increase in traffic in certain areas does provide its own justifiable criteria. Why do we have to wait until someone gets seriously hurt before positive action is taken? We know our communities better than anyone else, and we should have a bigger say in what happens here, safety always being our number-one priority. I fully support my motion on tonight's agenda directing City Manager and City Attorney to continue these discussions moving forward and to bring back to us an amended, not terminated, clearly not terminated, but an amended agreement with language that addresses and provides solutions to these issues. I know that my colleagues have worked on this issue too, and I want to thank them and ask for their support of my item. Folks, it's about time that we brought this traffic enforcement agreement, traffic engineering agreement, into the century that we're living in and to face how traffic is handled today through our communities, our cities. It's not safe, and it needs to be changed. So, I am very happy with the City Manager and City Attorney having, and it's part of the backup in here, their memo, City Attorney's memo, discussing the meeting that they've had with the county. And it does seem like there is some light, perhaps, at the end of the tunnel, where, in fact, we may have a better collaboration, if you will, with the county on these issues. It's difficult. It's intricate. There's a lot that goes into it. But I will tell you, I think that we certainly have the horsepower sitting here to be able to make it happen, and it's something that should happen. It's not just out West. It's not anywhere. It's our entire city that have, through the years, that faced these same problems of, how many times do you hear us sit up here and say, "Well, you know, we asked, we submitted for something, but nothing ever meets the warrant"? Well, I'm telling you, the criteria for the warrants is wrong and needs to be looked at and, again, refreshed. Things are different now. You can't be looking and relying on a forty-year-old agreement that just doesn't play right anymore. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor? Go ahead. Commissioner Seifel?
Thank you very, very much. As you could see, on the item, under the Commission Items, Commissioner Seifel's item and mine are comparable. And the reason for that is I brought up, I think it was two meetings ago, a discussion on the traffic enforcement agreement in discussion with the City Attorney. He felt that a meeting with the County Attorney was necessary, and so I promised to defer it then, and I kept that promise. I first brought this item up about two, two and a half years ago.
Commissioner Castillo, if I could?
Yes.
We've got to take a vote on this item first, or item thirteen.
I'm speaking on it.
You're speaking on your item?
No, I'm speaking on, actually, they're both the same. We can join them if you want. But the point was, about two and a half years ago or so, I brought this issue up because I got sick and tired of the county saying no to us. And I wasn't alone in that. I think we all felt the sting of that. And we've been going to these street namings for deceased children who might still be alive if we were a little bit more prudent about how we did these traffic engineering duties. It was my opinion, City Attorney was sympathetic with that opinion, that we're in breach, that the county is in breach of their agreement. The language there is crystal clear about what their responsibilities are and how they can't slough them off simply because of budget. Now, that's what we entered into originally in the seventies, and it was an amend, there was an amendment in the eighties. That was a long time ago. The conversation that the City Manager and the City Attorney have had with the county finally produced a promising meeting. I've been in touch with them all along. I've been talking to them about it all along. And the meeting that they had with the county is promising. There are still many questions. A general outline for how an item could be, this contract could be amended, was laid out. There are still many, many questions about it. It includes the city doing some of the work that frankly is laid out in the original agreement. But the practical reality is the county doesn't have the funding to do that. So, some of this is going to involve cost. We may be able to recover some of that county, some of that funding from county sources. We're not sure. An overarching question is, when we do the work, will they insure it? There's been an indemnification cloud over this question for about as long as we've been discussing it, and it's just unfair. How could they say that if we put a stop bar on a street, let's say, at Chapel Lake Estates, that they won't indemnify us, when they're indemnifying now and covering the cost of any lawsuit without the stop bars? It just makes no sense. So, there are still very many questions that are left to be asked here. I am excited that we're all together on this issue. It's a long time coming. The staff, we're going to, the staff and the City Attorney, we're going to meet with the staff at the county anyway. They still have more work to do from our original motion, which was to tell them to go and meet with them. So, the continuation of the meetings is fine by me. That was something they were going to do anyway. What I'm more interested in right now is a package coming back that we can study about what the new normal will be going forward with traffic engineering. Because, quite honestly, what we have right now is not working. And if it doesn't work, quite honestly, it was the potential of having to call them for a one sixty-three that I think got them to pay attention, because they are in potential breach of this agreement. So, I'm very, very happy to see so much support for it, and let's move forward, and let's keep our eyes open, and whatever it is that comes back, we'll study it very carefully. But traffic engineering is about life and death on the roads with so many cars speeding around and causing potential difficulty. Our roads need to be taken back, and this is something that can't wait. And my question to you, Mr. Manager, is what do you think the timeframe might be for you to bring us back some sort of understandable package, Mr. City Attorney? Some possible amendment that we can look at? What's your sense? Do you have a sense of that? Can you report a sense of that?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, at this point, the county indicated they would get back to us. I don't believe they gave a definitive timeline for it, but I'm sure we will follow up with them if we don't hear within the next week or so.
I would encourage you to press them and to get them to come back. The people in this city are very, very interested in getting the roads back in order. It's the number-one concern in the city. It's traffic. And so, I very much appreciate the discussion. Thanks.
Mayor, I would just want to clarify something.
Hold on.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. City Manager Dodge, City Attorney Gordon. Mr. Carl Kennedy, who brought the house down, from what I understand, with that meeting a couple weeks ago, thank you for your efforts. Vice Mayor Seifel, thank you for bringing this forward. Happy to support your motion tonight. Here are my general concerns. The county, for the better part of all of our tenure up here, has not been willing to see our point of view. It wasn't until there was some movement in Cooper City where there may have been a shift in viewpoint. There certainly has been a change in administrators downtown, and we have new leadership downtown, and perhaps maybe a new vision downtown. The City Manager Dodge, I don't want to see this amendment being held as equipped pro quo for other things that the county is asking us to support, like trash. My experience in seeing how the county operates is they took over a regional system nine years ago, and it's still not right. And there needs to be a change there as well. We have a waste working group.
On the item.
On the item. Generally speaking, I am happy, Mayor, that there has been some movement. But quite frankly, I want to see something, either they're on board with us or not, before the end of the month. The City Manager, City Attorney can certainly update us, even if it goes past our second meeting of May. But I don't want to see this thing come to a, well, we'll get back to you in June of two thousand twenty-three. I've seen that song. I've seen that movie. I don't want to see it again.
All right. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, my colleague mentioned, one of his requests was that City Manager, City Attorney would come back to us, and that's exactly what I asked for in my reading of my item here tonight, that they have these conversations, these meetings, and that they come back to us. Maybe it's not the total finished product, but it's something that we can start having serious conversations about and talk about individual issues that need to be addressed and how they all fit together. So, I'm very happy what I'm hearing from my colleagues tonight, and I'm hoping that each and every one of them will support my item, item thirteen, and that we can actually start really moving forward and have some good progression on this. So, thank you.
I want to just say, I wanted an offer amendment to teach people how to drive. Yesterday, I was going to a ribbon-cutting on Pines Boulevard going west, and the emergency trucks were ready to come out, and the lights turned red. So, I slowed down. I turned red. I stopped, and fourteen, I counted.
Fourteen?
Fourteen cars went through those lights.
Oh, wow.
And that's that, and you go up and down Pines Boulevard, our police, I saw them the other day, they're out there with the speed. They're just flying.
Oh, I hope it wasn't one of their.
Everybody has every guard for direction. I'm all in favor of making these things, but nobody's going to follow.
Well, I certainly hope it wasn't one of their family members that was waiting on that rescue to get to them.
All right. The City Clerk, call her.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to speak real quick.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just, listen, I really do think this is hugely interesting to me because, you know, my career had to continually deal with this for the thirty years I've been dealing in the business. I am very, very, I ask, you know, as these discussions go further, that there's, you know, serious consideration given to both, again, the liabilities and the costs that are associated with any kind of agreement that's given. I mean, back when this agreement was made, I mean, there was an intention to provide those maintenance services to the city, and they failed to do that correct, whether it be budget, resources, reallocations, whatever that may be. But this city was doing it at one time, and then, you know, the city stopped doing and gave it to the county, and the county has not been able to maintain some of those simple maintenance items, which is causing, which I believe is the driving point behind this. So, taking some of those maintenance responsibilities back in terms of financial impacts, as well as, you know, long-term legal liabilities, really, I would ask concern for. The fact is, is that, yeah, this, the agreement that is provided surely is a, it's very simple. It's so simple. It's like, you just, you guys take it over, and you have to follow what you call the manual of uniform traffic control devices. If we were doing it, we would have to follow the manual, uniform traffic control devices too, no different than what the county's doing. So, they are required to do what we would be required to do. They took that responsibility. They're not performing, you know, those services to the level that we certainly need. And, you know, as these conversations continue, I'm just more interested in some of the details. You know, what interests me and what the parties agreed to do in the City Attorney's staff report or to report to this Commission was the final statement. The parties will discuss the status of the meeting internally at the city and the county respectively, and circle back with each other, proceed to the next steps. I don't know what that means. Is that just strictly administratively? Is that looking for input from this Commission? What we're willing to yield or to absorb as a responsibility in this process? I don't know. So, you know, as these conversations go forward, to me, details right now are very, very important so that we can have these conversations. So, I am in support of us continuing dialogue. It's very interesting to see how it goes. But I do want to make one thing clear. You know, there is a reference here that there is a model that was done at one point with Cooper City. I'm going to tell you, I don't support that model at all. I know that model. Uh-uh. No. I know. Because they were able to transfer everything and still somehow, I'll just stop there. So, all I'll say is that if the conversation is to move towards that model, so my answer to number five is no. Don't engage that model.
All right.
Do something else.
All right. And just remember that, and I remember this years ago, when the county took it over, there's responsibility and cost involved, which is why we transfer. We transfer one, and you get back, you got a responsibility, and you got a cost. So, we just need to know that.
It's a tough situation.
City Attorney, can we combine two? Ten, with the mayor? Can we combine, all right, let's just take item thirteen, please? City, oh, we talked, any further discussion on item thirteen? All right, City Clerk, call and roll, please.
Mayor, may I ask who seconded item thirteen?
Commissioner Castillo.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz? Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, Commissioner Castillo, item fourteen, please.
Yeah, we've covered it.
Okay.
It was the same thing.
That's it. I just said we were going to double, but that's okay. That's it, folks. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.